...is that we had conversations with Selve and Regina, Regina University, with their graduate program. And Mrs. Lynch, I had a conversation in Central Falls, as I'm taking in this right now. It's having residency, or teachers in residence essentially. So they're hiring 15 educators who are day-to-day subs essentially in the district. And then they would partner with a classroom teacher. But if the teacher was out, they would be able to provide instruction. So we're in conversations with Selve, Regina to look at students and their teaching program. And how do we provide a teacher residency model for their students? So that they could be working side by side with our teachers. Again, working with, being able to provide quality instruction on a daily basis. Our program will look at a four-year partnership with Selve. So starting with students who are in their freshman year. They would start partnering with Colt Andrews teachers. Their first year, they would be substitute teachers as they start to learn pedagogy, some content. But as they moved and had a partnership with the building for four years. Their junior and senior year, they would be ready to be substitute teachers on a daily basis. We think we'll be able to build more capacity of substitute teachers. But also provide a flexible model at, say, Colt Andrews. Where we have a lot more adults in the building. So that we can have our data meetings without providing a substitute teacher. Flexible classrooms, interventions, tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions in the classroom. And have more flexible moving. So it's really interesting seeing what Central Falls is doing. Because we've been having those conversations with Selve for about six months right now. We're just waiting for them to come back from summer break to see what our next steps are. I think that's going to be really the model of providing the capacity for quality teaching and learning for our students for 180 days. I also think it's going to create a culture whereby we can lower some of the stress level. Why are teachers out? Is it overwhelming? We can have those conversations about when do we have our data meetings? When do we have our RTI meetings? When do we have our IEP meetings? I think there's a lot of stress upon teachers right now. And if we can provide flexible models, I think that we will see an increase or a decrease in our teacher absenteeism. Because they have to support whatever ongoing basis with a residency model. Are there any questions so far?
Having done what Amy does, what are we, how are we approaching the fact that it takes certain skills in certain classrooms? Particularly in science and math. And if you are looking for filling spaces, we have, for example, a science class that doesn't have a teacher for a week, or a math class that doesn't have a teacher for a week. I'm going to be able to fill the seat. I'm not going to be able to teach the subject. I'm not going to be able to run the lab. Those kinds of things. How are we looking at meeting the needs of those specific types of classes that we offer?
That's a great question. I think we learned from experience last year when similar situation happened. So I think a lot of this communication where we know a teacher's going to be out for more than five days. Of how do we start recruiting a long-term sub, especially in the content area? As I said, at the middle school and the high school on a day-to-day basis, a lot of times we rely on high school teachers who are in the science department or the math department to cover that classroom. So that we do have a content specialist at the middle school and high school. A lot of it gets, and I'll be honest with you, it gets taxing. When it's the same teachers covering for the same teachers who are out. It takes a lot more coercing of that teacher to cover that classroom. So, but a day-to-day, we do look for, again, the middle school and the high school, there isn't a lot of internal coverage. But there are teachers that, without me, would ever substitute. They come in and say, "I only want to teach science. I only want to teach special education." And that's what, through ASO, they're allowed just to see those openings. And they create their own profile. Elementary, again, as I said, in the A.D. situation, sometimes there's a lot of movement. Where you come in for a P.E. teacher, but you might end up covering for a grade three classroom. So again, I think it's, to reiterate and reiterate the point, it's easier to cover classrooms in content at the high school because of the added periods in the elementary.
Just a quick question. One of the things that we've seen is, and I'm not sure this is contract related. Oh yeah, I'm sure it is contract related. And it has to do with what Marge was talking about. Is that sometimes you'll have a teacher who may, you know, "I'm going to be out for one week. And then I'm going to be out for another three weeks." And then, so it prevents the district from, now they end up being out for four months. But we haven't gone out to look for somebody that would be a constant in that classroom. Is there any, is that something that has to be negotiated in the contract? Or, because we've got caught with that situation quite a few times.
Yep, I think, again, reiterating of what we learned from last year. So we've sent out our internal memos saying, "If you know a teacher's going to be out for five days." So a lot of it's incumbent upon the building principal to start recruiting for their content specialists. So we're looking for that after a five-day absence. So we'll be doing that moving forward. There's nothing in the contracts to say if, you know, that requires teachers to say, "I'm going to be out for an extended period," or provide a doctor's note. So it is a difficult situation.
Thanks.
The other thing I thought you were going to ask is, we also look at some of the data over time. Because if you recall, we changed the contract language to contracts, you know, where we only pay teachers out up to 180 days. So we started doing a correlation again, where I get a little wonky with the data. Looking prior to 2009 until today. To see if there's any change in the number of absences from 2009 to 2016. There will be notices that teachers who used all their sick days in 2009 are the same teachers that used their sick days in 2016. And the teachers in 2009 that had perfect attendance are the same teachers that have perfect attendance in 2016. So there really hasn't been an increase of teachers, you know, abusing their sick days because of not getting paid out after 180 days. I think that's a testament to our teachers' professionalism. Moving forward, if not being paid out when they retire.
Mrs. Silver says that. How many times have you said that to us? Those who do, do, those who don't, don't? Or it's always the same?
I think a lot of the absences that we're asking and talking to leadership on both sides, since 2012, has been the amount of change in the system. And the amount of stress, whether it's teacher evaluation, accountability, responsibility, reviewing data, it's just, there's a lot going on and a lot of transition. I think as educators, sometimes we're in for us to change and people stress that. So we're seeing a lot more absences, I think, really to adult stress as opposed to taking a long weekend.
What are we doing about that? I mean, I, you know, I am a mother at home with four children and my husband is gone and nobody's going to relieve my stress. So I'm not making light of what we ask of the teachers. Because it's tremendous amount of work that they have to do now. But I am concerned about the number of days when I'm looking at this, that people are absent.
Yep, so I think we started addressing that stress level. In the last couple of years, I've somehow been hired. So since I've been superintendent and been preaching, really about building teacher capacity through job-related coaching. So again, tonight, we just appointed an ITI coach, an induction coach. Again, that's important for teachers and it's helping them. When we talk about teachers providing tier one, tier two, tier three interventions in the classroom, sometimes, you know, you sit there and say, you know, "Mrs. McBride, I want you to be able to do a better job teaching reading comprehension and use these three strategies." And sometimes you just don't know what those strategies are. And so again, that just elevates some of the stress. So by providing some coaches saying, "All right, Mrs. McBride, I'm the RTI coach. I'm the reading specialist, I'm the math coach. We're going to do this together. I'm going to show, I'm going to model so that we can actually provide and build teacher capacity. So we're going to do it together, then I'm going to watch you do it. I'm going to provide some coaching and then you're going to be on your own." And I think once teachers feel comfortable, I think that's the alleviation of the stress. Again, there's been a lot, a lot of changes over the last couple of years. And we've been moving in the right direction as a district to provide that job-related professional development. Again, having the conversations with Selve. So how do we bring in more adults so that we can have those data meetings? Who's collecting the data? Who's analyzing the data? What do we do next with the data is really the point. It's not so much that we have the data, it's how do we get to the so what? And those are different kind of conversations. And I think we need to, whether it's our adults, our administrators, our paraprofessionals, our substitute teachers. I think we need to help people through the change process. And schools have changed since 1965 to 2016. And they're going to change again in 2021. And that's difficult. How do we assist teachers through those conversations? So that they have clear expectations, they have the support, and they feel safe to innovate.
Are you ready for me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You may be aware that after I sold two of my businesses, I got recruited to become a permanent sub in this school district, especially at the high school. And there was something that was very alarming to me at that time. And I, you know, what you are doing about that situation and if it still exists. One of the problems was that the teachers did not have, did not provide, when they were absent, a good, how do I say, current lesson plan. And so because of it, although my certificate stated that I was all, all classes, all, all...
Subjects.
Also all grades. And so I saw, I saw things happen there that were just absolutely awful because of that particular reason. And the second question I have is, are we paying enough to get the best qualified people? Thank you.
So I addressed the first question first. And so you may be aware, by me with every substitute teacher that we hire, and I've been doing that since 2009, and gave you as part of one of those meetings. And it's a, it's a great opportunity for me. Because we want our substitutes to feel welcome and know what my expectations are. Because we only have 180 days, that's it. So every day is valuable to students. So I don't expect teachers leaving behind crossword puzzles, word searches, moving the top drawer, fill-in-the-blank activities. We talk about four instructional strategies all the time when I talk to substitute teacher. Students and teachers should be leaving and have a plan of, what are the clear learning targets? Where are we going in algebra one? What did we do yesterday? What are we doing tomorrow? The student should be aware of those learning targets, what those projects are. The second instructional strategy that should be happening in every classroom that if there's an assignment left behind, kids have models of strong and weak work. They're able to do some peer editing, self-assessing. Because the teacher left behind, what does a four or a five look like? And what does a two look like? So we're moving into that culture. The third instructional strategy we want to see in every classroom, and I expect to see from substitute teachers, is that they provide descriptive feedback. If, you know, if Mary made a mistake and they're looking at student work, Mary's saying, "I like the way that you did X. I like the way that you used transitional words. I like the way that you used a formula. I like the way that you used a rubric." As opposed to, "Mary did a good job today." And Mary says, "We didn't want to do a good job then." And then the last instructional strategy I want to see from pre-K to A.P. calculus classes is that it's a slave learning environment for teachers and students to be innovative. So I expect that in every classroom, Mrs. Selve, so that in the lesson plans, students know what they did yesterday and what they have to do tomorrow. It shouldn't be just read the next section and answer the three questions at the end. I want kids to know what their projects are, what their timelines are. And the lesson plans should reflect that. And I have to say, and that's correlated with our assessment literacy, professional development. And over the last three years, I have to say, I'm pretty confident in every classroom, those lesson plans are rigorous. I know Amy's here, she probably can speak to it at Colt Andrews. But I'm confident, you know, 90 to 95% of our teachers have even very thorough lesson plans. I know I took partnerships at the high school, checking lesson plans on a ongoing basis. Again, what gets really difficult is, Mrs. McBride mentioned, when we have long-term absences and what's the roles and responsibilities of the substitute teachers? Because those plans might not be as, as thorough. So I think that's changed since the time that you were affirming some. That was one of the recommendations that came up, that we go back to permanent substitute teachers. On a daily basis, we need anywhere between 30 and 40 substitutes. So having six substitutes, you know, or permanent subs, would not address the issue. So I think it's one of those things that, especially at the high school or the middle school, one person's not going to make a difference. We actually need more than a hundred. The second question that you asked about is our pay scale. Amy, you get a lot of call-ups today. Actually, it's Amy's recommendation last year. And we worked with Amy and several other substitute teachers, and Mrs. Silver, about increasing our pay scale. So we went from, we now have a graduated by tier pay scale for our substitute teachers. Last year was $75 a day. It was $75 a day and then going back to like...
$19.99.
$19.99. So we actually increased our pay last year. So you want to say the rates?
I don't know off the top of my head, but again, Amy, at Amy's recommendation, what we did was establish two pay scales. One for those who are working on a substitute certificate, much like anyone with a bachelor's degree, that's issued by Ryan, which is a K-12. And then a different pay scale for a certified teacher who's working as a substitute. And that's built in and they both go up, you know, accordingly, depending on how long they're in the position. So we're rewarding that commitment to our district.
I think it's after 45 days in the district, it's actually another bump. So then it goes from $95 a day to $105 a day if you're working consistently in the district. So way much higher than our neighbors. There's still districts that are anywhere between $16 and $17 per day. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Tad, it's great.
Well deserved. Go ahead. Okay. Go ahead.
So I just noticed on the data here that the sick days are 77.3. And I don't know how sick days work, how many a teacher gets. That depends on how long the teacher has been here. But I'm, so I guess my question is sort of, it seems like there's a lot of sick days to be had. And so if these sick days are being taken, is it a problem? Is the problem that we can't get the subs? Or is the problem that there are a lot of days that we need to fill with subs because of all the sick days? Like, why is that number so high? And then I'm also curious about the sick bank number at 40 and what that means.
So, so the contract is 15 sick days per year. And so that kind of goes back to what I said earlier. There's some teachers that have for 20 years have 15 times 20 sick days approved. And just never take a sick day. There's other teachers maybe for, again, 20 years that have three sick days. Start, they just, they wear three sick days on a yearly basis. But that's contractual, that they have 15. And so it's, so it's high where, again, we look at the data and patterns to see how, the teachers are Monday and Fridays a lot. You know, I've got the principals have conversations with the teachers and say, "Mary, you know, Mrs. Silver, I know, notice that you've been out a lot of Fridays over the last two months. Is this something we should be talking about?" You know, there's conversations like that. But as I said earlier, there's no rhyme or reason where sometimes we're not fill rate. We might have 60 absences one day and have 100% fill rate. And then the following day, we'll have 28 absences and have 10 vacancies. So, but we've been consistently hovering around 35 subs a day. And we're comfortable with that number. So we can fill that rate. And again, it's, it's, it just kind of fluctuates. But I think it's one of those, again, that culture thing of, the contract is what it is. There's 15 days because our teachers are able to approve it. You know, there's no TDI for our teachers. So when a teacher goes on our maternity leave, they're using sick days federally. So that's why sometimes it's really, it's high. Sick bank is actually part of the contract where teachers donate days to the sick bank. It is what it is. And then teachers are able to apply to the sick bank if there's an illness in the family. So we had some, some teachers that maybe undergo in chemotherapy or have a long-term illness where the sick bank will actually grant them some days. And that's what the sick bank is. And so again, that's contractual. But yeah, I mean, there's two things that I look at every month. Sick family, sick and personal are at three highest. And it's, you know, we're trying to work with the union, how do we lower that rate? Last year, we increased the sub rate. We're researching different avenues to increase our fill rate. But again, I think it's how do we work with teachers to get them to come 180 days. And I think that's really important. And I think a lot of that goes to culture. What's the culture of the building? You know, are they feeling that importance of being in there for students for 180 days? And I'll say if anything, that they're in a fort sometime tonight. We have teachers that show up 180 days. We have other teachers that use every sick day. We have those personal conversations with them.
And just to clarify, that sick family, that would be where things like maternity leave go?
No, that would be like, so if, sick and sick family could be in the same category. But sometimes it might be, "I have a sick child, so I'm using a sick day to take care of my child. I'm not sick, but my child is." But still, a sick day.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shannon. Okay, you got two broad categories of absence. There's scheduled absences and unscheduled absences. Obviously, field trips are scheduled absence, you can plan for that. How big a problem is facing unscheduled absence as opposed to scheduled absence?
It's a very big, that's the bigger issue. Because, you know, Mrs. Shannon will be pointing out our PD calendar in a couple of weeks for the year. So we, I can tell you with our Title II, you know, data review meetings, April 11th, we can put in a sub for April 11th of next year. And hopefully, we can plan for that and it'll be coming. But it is those, the night before someone calls in sick, we might not get coverage for that. And that's what we, we look at to make sure that when we're planning professional development or field trips, there are those days that there's high occasions of people calling in sick. But it is the, it's the night before that four people call in sick because there's an illness or something like that. Those are the other field. But when we plan professional development, it's in advance and we usually have those coming. Sometimes what ends up happening is that if there's three or four teachers who are scheduled to be in professional development, and we're not able to find subs because four teachers call in sick, we'll cancel the professional development and we're going to ask teachers back.
Okay, so you've got a big problem, the unscheduled absences. Well, what's the protocol for that? Do you call them to the phone number, "I am sick"? And hang up and that's the end of it?
Essentially, yep. So they'll go in ASO, put in, they're taking a sick day. It's usually, you know, before 6:00 in the morning, and then they come from class.
In my profession, when I call in sick, it's 10 minutes on the phone answering questions. And by the time I'm done with the question, I'm going, "You know what? I'm not sick anymore."
Yeah, that's, that's sort of the process. It's just, and I hope it's, you know, again, I think for the most part, our teachers are professionals. I don't want to lose that in translation that, you know, we have majority of our teachers who are not abusing the sick days, that when they're sick, I know our administrators left. But there's some teachers who are showing up that are sick, that we need to send home. It's actually, you know, that we need to say, "You're going to infect other kids? Please go home." So I mean, our teachers are true professionals and there are, there's a few that, that we follow up with. But it's not 10 or 15 minutes on the phone call that's actually going on to ASO, putting down, and taking a sick day, sick family, clicking the button, and that's your absence.
After a certain number of days, they have to, they have to show what they've been out, don't they?
It's not in the contract.
It's not in, well, my, my other issue is looking at these numbers. Gee, on Friday, the numbers double, triple the number of people that are out twice the other four days. Huge amounts. And I don't, this is probably going to offend some people, but I don't find that particularly professional.
No, and I agree. And that's why I have, again, I bring the data to my monthly meetings with both the union leadership. Because when they're complaining that we don't have enough subs, I look at the data and say, "We have tripled the amount of sick calls on a Friday. A sub may or may not come in. If it's 80 degrees or 85 degrees in June or May, it's a nice beach day for $90. They're probably not coming in if it's for the time with their family." So again, I use the data with the union leadership to say, "We have teachers calling in sick. What are we going to do together to combat that?" So there needs to be, you know, those conversations between the union leadership and their membership, or rectifying the issue too, again, and their professional integrity. So that's why I have these meetings, or this data with the union leadership. I show it to them every month, what it looks like and how do we work together when they're saying teachers are stressed, when they need more time. Well, sometimes they need to talk to their colleagues and say, "You can't take out every Friday because you're stressing out, you know, the rest of the building. We're covering for that teacher and then I'm getting a break." So sometimes it's that professional respect and push from colleagues. Because I think everybody knows, I guess, teachers or parents, who are those teachers who are out every Friday and who are those teachers? And, you know, building principals, I have those conversations, but it's difficult. It's a tough culture to break.
It's a point we'll take. And I know that the majority of our faculty and staff are there five days a week and are there sick. And they're there when there's a foot of snow out. And I appreciate that. But talking doesn't seem to be working. Because I don't see it working yet. So how much longer do we talk before we take steps?
So fortunately, I think we're going back into contract negotiations. And so the data is very detailed. And so the data is very telling. Some steps that we might have to take.
Thank you.
Let's go with, go with Mrs. Del and then we'll build a response.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What happens when there aren't any more subs available that particular day? Are you paying the teachers who have a free period to cover in that situation or, or what?
Yep, so, um, some teachers get, uh, get a high school, they have what, seventh? So we're breaking that down to, so they'll get paid for that extra teaching period. So that happens in the middle school and high school.
Thank you.
Um, and oftentimes you'll hear is that at different levels where there's whole teaching classrooms, if the special educator is out, that there might not be a sub for the special educator or a special educator might be covering for a science teacher. So, um, when, when there's no more adults left, we do scramble and we try to make, um, find every solution because again, our students are there, they need quality instruction. So we try to find solutions. But the middle school and high school have teachers take out an extra teaching period. They, they are compensated.
Uh, when you were saying about, um, subs being just, you know, like, you're going to sub out of the building, um, I'm good to tell you that in my experience of four and a half years here, that, um, my, the job that I had, uh, I, I was very lucky because I was actually covered in most cases for long-term situations such as maternity and long-term illnesses. And, um, it worked out very well. And so I think that having improved the sub in the building in that particular case and that particular need can be effective.
Yeah, I, I think, point we'll take it. So when we have, this year we had a number of long-term absences at the high school, for instance, um, just due to, um, I think the whole English department, you know, on maternity leave and something like this year, um, which, and their wonderful educators, but we needed a number of long-term subs, um, at that, at that point. And we were able to recruit, um, English certified teachers to fill those vacancies. So I think that sometimes not having the permanent sub provides us some flexibility to recruit a long-term sub at that point and the content that I brought.
Thank you.
Um, I just have one more question. So forgive me if I'm oversimplifying here, but I, I, it seems to me that if the teachers have a certain number of sick days, they can take those days whenever they want, right?
Essentially.
So it seems to me that the, the priority should be, or it looks like it has to be, how to attract more subs? Or, or is there something that I'm missing? Because I feel like the problem is that we often, it sounds like, don't have the subs to fill those spots.
I think the priority is how we get our teachers to come to work a hundred and eighty
Do you think that's realistic?
I, I think that's, um...
I think it's a fair, it's a fair, what?
If you're asking for the pri, what the priority is, it's why are, you know, why are there so many sick days and how do we change that contract so that, um, student, uh, students, teachers are coming for a hundred and eighty days? Is it realistic? I think it's more realistic than finding more substitute teachers that can provide the same quality instruction at day in and day out basis.
So just one more follow-up because I have been in contract negotiations. So when you talk about those coming up, is, are you, are you talking about, um, discussing cutting sick days? Or I don't, I don't understand, like, how, how do you get to that point that you're talking about where teachers are coming to school on, on all of those days?
So I'll be more than, yeah, we discussed that when we get into negotiations, probably in the next session or, you know, instead of...
Can't refuse that.
Talking about it and what our strategy would be going into negotiations in a good session.
That would be great because, because I haven't understood that. And I, and, and just, just to follow, and I ask because I, I feel like it would be, it would be good for everyone to understand, if, if that's the priority, how do we, how do we get to that? How do we get there? Otherwise, to me, it, it seems unrealistic because I don't guess most of us wouldn't understand that process.
Okay, any other comments?
All right, I do want to, yeah, I want to close this down pretty soon.
Can I find one? Mr. Chair, thank you so much. Um, not, so to not have to reinvent the wheel, um, I, I usually try to solve the problem by looking at some, what someone else is doing and they're successful at it. And so have you done research on looking to see districts that have had, I mean, this is a very common problem nationally? And, and so have you seen other districts where they have been successful in curing the problem and what would their, what would their fixes?
So I haven't, in my research, I haven't seen, um, anybody who's cured the problem. I think we still have, um, teacher absenteeism. Um, I have to be honest, in Renata this year, you know, I have a superintendent I talked to, each one addressed that subs, finding substitute teachers has been an issue for, not only this year, for the last couple of years. Um, some of the teachers that we hired tonight coming from other districts talked about PNC, professional development because of that and stuff. So it's an issue for us for now. But through my research, where there is lower absenteeism is, um, those systems where there's a positive school culture, that teachers feel valued when they come to work, that, again, that they, they feel, um, supported by their building administrators. They have time to discuss change initiatives, looking at data. But it is more about culture in the, in the, in the building, in the district as opposed to a third-party solution or more subs. But it is really about, um, satisfaction ratings from teachers and when they're satisfied with their job and their performance and they feel happy, they're coming tomorrow.
Thank you.
I just one comment for me, and I'm really, I wouldn't be surprised if you don't have an answer and it's definitely something maybe we can talk later on when it comes to contract negotiations. But, you know, I'll piggyback a little bit on what Mrs. Del said. You know, when you, when you quoted the numbers of somebody's there twenty years hasn't missed a day of work, you, you gotta pay that individual out three hundred days if they retire in twenty years. I know another one there. But is that a grandfather clause?
No, no.
So that's across the board. Do you know what happened in other districts that may put a ceiling and then they use or lose, um, when it comes to, for example, in the military, if you can accumulate so many days of leave, uh, but once you hit the, the sixty ceiling, as you come to the end of the fiscal year, you may use or lose it, however much you can only carry over sixty. Do you happen to know if there's other districts that might do that?
I'm, I'm not sure if there's other districts that can research it, but I think it goes back to an earlier statement, going back and comparing absences in two thousand and nine before we had a, a payout over a hundred and eighty days as opposed to now. It's the same amount of teachers who are calling in sick and the same amount of teachers who are, you know, here every day. So, um, we would think that there would be a change in that mentality once a teacher approved a hundred and eighty days or a hundred and sixty days of its tier, um, that they say, it doesn't matter, I have a hundred and sixty days, I'm going to use all, use my fifteen days this year because I'm going to lose them anyways. They're still showing up for work, um, again, in, uh, following toward the professionalism. So we haven't seen a change in our, um, absentee, absentee rates because of the change in contract.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Dr. Underwood. Just so that you all know, uh, we had a discussion several times about just bringing this forward and just discussing because this is an issue. Uh, you know, across the age group in particular with, with New Orleans. So I thought it was important to bring it forward and, uh, I do appreciate the conversation and what we can do in the future to try to tailor it, uh, when we want to tailor it. All right, so that concludes the agenda focus. We'll go back to superintendent's recommendations, uh, to, to...
Recommendation as twenty sixteen, act fifty, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the budget facilities subcommittee, approves disposal of assets regarding trailer to Ruff for one dollar.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair?
Second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Del, second by this, a prior discussion. They're on. Okay. Any other?
No, just if anyone has a question.
Like, we don't have any comments, but if any of us have any questions, they're here.
Do you have any?
Is there any questions?
Hi, I'm Donna Alba.
Amanda Palmer, did you hit the button?
There's a button there.
Hey, yeah.
I'm Donna Alba. I'm a little shorter than her. Um, Donna Alba.
Anna Palmer.
And we're on the board of, of the organization of Ruff. And if you have questions, here we are.
So, may I ask you a question? So what are you planning to do with the building?
We plan on using it for, um, a lot of our fundraisers. We want to use it for, um, really a bunch of different things that we, we have up in our, you know, heads. Um, but mostly for our fundraisers, um, because we always have to pay out money to rent a place to, um, you know, do different things that we do, whether it be vaccinations for, for animals or sometimes we even have to rehabilitate animals and we have to send them out. And this way we could do it right here on our home base. It's just, it's really an eclectic, um, desire that we have for the, but it's basically...
I think, I think that that is a wonderful plunger of your language you would say.
Thank you.
I think, I think we've got, of our heads.
Can, can, I just wondered if, just so the public understands, if you could just tell them what the trailer is and why we're getting rid of it.
Do you want to?
The trailer started out as a used, um, classroom that came... Yes. That we purchased, used, and we had it at Byfield School. And that was because we had more children than Byfield could handle. And, uh, when we were done with it, we moved it to the high school. And that's when, when we used it for the purple layout, play, whatever you call it.
Play school.
Play school.
Purple play.
That's right. But then we were told that it was no longer appropriate for children. So, um, and it, it was really a nice trailer, uh, but it's sitting in our lot and it's not going anywhere and it's taking up a lot of space. And if somebody can use it for the benefit of the rest of the community, then I think that that's a great idea and it frees up space on our campus. So, um, that was the gist of our thought process in the, uh, in our subcommittee and that's the history of the, um, classroom. Does that help, Karen?
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Oh, Mrs. Del?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, just to further the discussion just a bit, uh, I think that the fact of what you are going to have to do to the building, uh, it gives us the rationale as to why we're selling it to you for one dollar. The one dollar makes the contract binding and at the same time, you know that you're going to have to do a lot, lots of amount of work to get it to where you need it to be. And so I just wanted to say that for the public because they might say, getting a building for a dollar? So I just wanted to say that, thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, I, you know...
Yeah, well, John, I agree with you because it's not, it's, the building is twenty-four by forty-five, twenty-four by forty-five. So it's not like you could just, you know, put it on the back of your, your pickup truck and drive it away. So it's going to cost a decent amount of money to remove it from, and since this is a nonprofit, it made, uh, sense to do that.
Okay, any other last comments? Seeing none, now my secretary here will recuse herself from the vote. Uh, so we'll have a five-person vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The odds have it.
Welcome, ladies. Thank you very much.
Ladies, good luck with that.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like a great pause. Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on, we're going to the chairperson's initiatives. I wanted to talk about these three items relatively quick. I'll, I'll open it if you have something quick. But truly, uh, we'll talk more at length in the future when we bring it forward. The first one is accolade recognition. You know, it was brought to my attention by, uh, Mrs. Wainwright that, uh, maybe we should have a letter that, uh, we can, uh, pass on to some of the success stories of our students that might fall outside of traditional, uh, school umbrella. Uh, she has sent me, uh, a template, a letter, uh, but more importantly, what I think needs to happen is we'll just shoot it out to all of you to take a look at and just, we'll come back into, um, a future meeting and then, uh, we can decide at that point as committed to see if this is moving on in the future. Any comments on that? The second one is on, uh, community visibility, more specifically, it's been brought up several times about phones and our website and some other things. So in regards to, uh, I know with the website, I speak into our superintendent, um, just looking at the website and what it's, what it's provided our communities, actually can very well, I know, let's come on to some scrutiny. Um, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. Underwood in case he wants to add anything to it or, or if anybody's got any questions, maybe we'll move on to the phone system.
Yeah, just real quickly, uh, the website is something that we're looking at. I directed all the, um, building principals between, uh, status schools to clean up their website, uh, update their website where they're broken links, make sure that there's new teacher contact, contact information, uh, on the websites, um, as well. So again, just that first layer, uh, making sure that the public has the right information and the right resources. So that'll be happening between now and, um, the first week of school. We, we will be eventually looking at a different website provider that's easier for teachers to, to navigate and upload information that's, um, within three clicks that they're able to, um, update videos, update links, um, and communicate with parents. This one right now is quite commercial for teachers to use and that's why we have, uh, teachers using a plethora of different sites and it's really not that organized. So that, that's on our horizon and, um, uh, direct of technology will be a spare added that issue. You want me to just touch upon the phones real quickly? Um, we are also looking at the phones and cleaning up that system. Um, as you know, the last six months, we've been upgrading the, um, technology infrastructure in the building. Um, we are looking at different, um, options in phone services. At our budget subcommittee meeting, uh, our directive technology supplied a list of, um, of, of wishlist of when will be the next RFP, um, that goes out again, that will be within six months, um, so that we can start the school year and then do some research moving forward. Uh, we applied and used money differently. This go-around of how to use IB rate, um, services, um, to lower some of the costs. But within six months, we're looking at a new, um, phone system that'll be in place. But in the meantime, um, the directive technology and current environment going through on, um, what's being used in the current system. We know that when some people, um, download extensions, it goes to nowhere or if you do an eBay directory, it's...
Just the same.
It's the same who it is. So we'll be cleaning up some of that directory information over the next month by, uh, I plan to set up a new, um, vendor over the next six months.
Um, that's fantastic. And I think that once you do that, hopefully that will all clear up because that's, that's, it's frustrating as...
up because that's, that's, it's frustrating as a parent. My only other thing that I would say, and I'm not sure if we've had this discussion before, but I know it's happened because Kim gets my phone calls. To me, we should never be in a place where you make a phone call to a school and you call the front office, that nobody answers the phone. And I don't care if somebody's taking lunch or somebody's out for a break for fifteen minutes. If there's an emergency and somebody has to reach somebody at a school, I don't care if it goes back to the administration building, to the main secretary, but there has to be, and I don't, that, that, I don't think has anything to do with the school system, but the, the phone system, I think that has to do with who covers who while the person who's supposed to be answering the phone. But, you know, again, if there's ever an emergency and you need to, you shouldn't have to call two or three times and leaving a message, waiting for somebody to call you back, you gotta pick up your kid or some, do you know what I'm saying? I'm not sure how to fix it, but we've got to figure out a way to make sure that if all else fails, there's got to be somebody that'll answer the phone and...